Glad you're in attendance tonight. And at this particular time, I see our chaplain walk in and if it's okay with him, I'll ask Brad Turner, our county commission chaplain, to lead us in our prayer and our pledge, if you would, Brad.
Our most gracious and loving heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for another wonderful day, Lord, and thank you for everything that you've done for us in each one of our lives. I ask that you be with each one of the individuals here, Lord, this evening, with the dialogue that's going to take place tonight. Lord, may we uplift and edify each other and always turn to you, Lord, when the questions get difficult and some of the circumstances become bigger than us, Lord. I ask that we just focus on you. I ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen. Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Madam Clerk, at this time, if you would call the role to both of the Rutherford County Commission and the Planning Commission, both. Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black. Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P. Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner, Chairman Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch. Commissioner Serrano.
Yes.
Commissioner Lynch.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Bowen.
Here.
Commissioner Valt. Commissioner Reed. Twenty-four present.
Thank you. Our purpose tonight is to discuss the new county zoning ordinance. And I'd like to introduce a few people, if I could. Our consultant, the one we've been working with, the main person that we've been working with for the last couple of years, is Bill Terry of Bill Terry and Associates. Also, would like to introduce our planning staff, Doug Demossi, Elizabeth Emsmill, and Dale Corbin. And Josh, we all know Josh, he's here as well to kind of help us through this process. If you have any legal questions, Josh will help us along those lines. Any questions before we get started? We'll have basically an overview of what the Planning Commission has gone through the last couple of years. And by the consultant and by the staff, both, feel free to interject at any time with any questions that you might have, and we will try to get those answered for you. Planning commissioners or planning staff, either one. Planning commissioners, I think there are five of us that are here. Work your way into an empty seat up here and infiltrate the county commission, if you would, and do that now. There's plenty of seats, y'all come on up here. As a matter of fact, most of the planning commissioners almost have their regular seats. Maybe Veronica's a little bit out of place. Any questions before we get started? Doug, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Mr. Phillips's sentiment that we're very happy to be here tonight, to be able to make this first presentation to both the Board of Commissioners, the entire board, as well as the Planning Commission. Most of what we'll be talking about tonight, the Planning Commission has heard and gone over, but I think this will be good review for them, and I'm very excited to bring this all to the full commission tonight. What I'd like to do tonight, Bill, Mr. Terry, and I will kind of tag team on this one, going through the document. We're going to kind of do the overview, kind of a, you know, 30,000-foot overview of the document itself. Of course, if you have questions as we're going through here, as you can tell, hopefully, I can see several, you brought your drafts, it's a pretty thick document that we'll be going through. But again, we'll kind of give you the highlights of that, and if there's questions, of course, we'll be more than happy to answer them at the time. But what I'm going to do is just kind of start with a, just an overview here of the process that we've gone through to this point. Of course, this process, really, it started in earnest in 2009, and that's when we really started having the official meetings for the process. Even before that, we had started out in 2008, meeting with a different, different community organizations and groups, kind of trying to explain to them what it was we were trying to do. Essentially, what we were wanting to do was come up with a comprehensive plan for the unincorporated portions of the county. After that plan was created and then adopted, we wanted to base the new zoning regulations and also subdivision regulations off of that comprehensive plan. So again, the process itself started in early 2009 officially. There were a number of community meetings, and actually, there were a total of 10 community meetings, just at different parts of the, of the unincorporated counties, such as in the Rockvale, Las Cassas area, those kind of areas. We also had, you see on there, comprehensive plan steering committee meetings, there were a total of 14 of those. There were also 27 planning commission meetings where this plan was discussed in one form or another. Now, just those meetings in themselves don't count, the presentations, again, that I spoke of prior to the process beginning back in 2008. Staff, we went to several ham breakfasts and fish fries, we set up a little table, and we thanked the volunteer fire departments that we worked with for allowing us to sit up there, and if people had questions, we laid the maps out and things, trying to get more public input into the process. The media coverage also that we received on this was, was pretty good. There's been a number of print articles in both The Post and The Daily News Journal on this, as well as a number of radio interviews, that I've gone to WGNS and done several radio interviews during the week time for that. So that just kind of gives you a quick overview of the process. Ultimately, the Planning Commission did adopt the plan in April of 2011. So the next phase of the project was moving into the, excuse me, the update of our zoning ordinance. The first draft of the zoning ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission in August of 2011, which is about, just a little over a year ago now. Following that, we had a first work session in September of that year, September 26th. Right after that, in October, we had the draft zoning map distributed, and you should have copies of, and I meant, actually, I meant to say this before we started, a copy of the slides I'm going over should be in front of you, as well as the copy of the overall map that we'll be talking about later. Following the zoning map distribution to the Planning Commission, we had four community meetings, and the dates of those were October 17th, 18th, 24th, and 25th, in various parts of the county. We kept them at the middle schools, except for Smyrna Town Center, but Whitworth Buchanan Middle School, Rockvale Middle, and Oakland Middle were the other places that we had those, and that was beginning in October. Our second work session with the Planning Commission was in October 24th of 2011. Then we made a presentation to the Planning Commission at the end of November of 2011, regarding the changes that we've made to the draft from the community meetings and also the work sessions that we had to that point. The first public hearing we had on that, on the revised draft, was December 12th of 2011. We then had a number of work sessions with the Planning Commission, three to be exact, in January, February, and March of this year. Following those three, we had a second public hearing, April 9th of 2012. And then after that, there were about seven different work sessions in April through July, and finally, the third public hearing on August 13th, about a little over a month ago now, where it was recommended, approved, and sent forward by the Planning Commission to the full county commission. Oops. Jumped a little further ahead than I meant to. Actually, no, it didn't. That's exactly where we are. Sorry about that. The, this point, now that just kind of gives you just a quick overview of the, of the process we used to this point. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Terry to take over, and he's going to give you some discussion on state planning law and other issues.
I'm going to run through this fairly quickly, because I know you don't want to be bored by all the stuff that's in Tennessee code and in the background of zoning, but it might be helpful just to think about where we, how we got here. And so that's what I'm going to try to do. Zoning is not anything that's new in this country. It's actually been around since the Hoover days, when Herbert Hoover was the chairman, Secretary of Chamber of Commerce, Secretary of Commerce at the national level, and drafted a number of model acts for states to adopt, one of which being the Standard Zoning Enabling Act, one being a planning act, and one being municipal planning, and one being county planning. So that goes back to the mid-'20s. The first Supreme Court case on zoning, finding that it was constitutional and was not a taking of private property was in 1926 in Tennessee. The first case on it was in Memphis in 1927, and since that time, there's been just an absolute enormous body of law that's been put in place by all the court systems, federal court and state courts, basically looking at the enabling acts of the state and the 15th and 14th amendments of the Constitution. Tennessee's history in act planning began in the 1920s, when the four largest cities got private acts passed based upon those 1926 laws to enable them to adopt zoning ordinances and to engage in a planning program. And the first one's actually done in Memphis, Tennessee. Our general acts that we operate under now were adopted in 1935. They've been amended some, but really not a whole lot, and so the basic structure's still there. And in administering a zoning ordinance, as well as your subdivision regulations, we're talking about local governments being able to engage in the police power. And the police power is the ability of, of the authority of government to regulate private activity for the protection of public health, public safety, and public welfare. And that includes a wide variety of things, but mainly here, we're talking about the zoning ordinance. So that's the police power. The power to zone in Tennessee comes from the Tennessee code. This is the authority for a county. I'm not necessarily going to read all those sentences to you, but you can see what they cover, like location, height, size of building, the structures, percentage of lots, setbacks, uses of the land for trade, industry, residence, and all those kind of things. The county is given broad authority to adopt the zoning ordinance and to include those types of things in the zoning ordinance. Go ahead. If you have any questions or comments, at any time, feel free to break in. Another important thing we have in Tennessee to remember is that Tennessee is a Dillon Rule state. Dillon Rule is something also that's not new. Dillon's Rule is, is a rule of law that was developed by the Iowa Supreme Court in 1868 and named after Judge John Dillon. Basically, what it, it gets at is that there are limited powers of local government, and that in order for the local government to, to use those powers, they must be delegated by the state, because the state has all the power. They have to delegate it to local governments in order for local governments to have it. Last part of that slide simply means that state law must confer the power to local government. That's what Dillon's Rule is all about. And so we say that Tennessee is one of those Dillon Rule states, because a number of years ago as well, the Tennessee Supreme Court adopted Dillon's Rule. We talked a little bit about the benefits of zoning here. Zoning is always a controversial issue, because it deals with property, it deals with uses, it deals with buildings, but it does provide some benefits to a community. The main ones that I picked out to highlight are that it does provide predictability for types of land uses that you might expect in different parts of the county. It protects property values of individual property owners and homeowners by, by regulating incompatible or unsuitable uses. It can facilitate attractive growth and community involvement. Growth is going to occur, but how it's going to occur is pretty well determined by the zoning ordinance and your subdivision standards. Zoning helps prevent the overcrowding of land. When I say the overcrowding of land, we talk about the density of development, and that's something that you select here at the local level. It's not something that is imposed upon you, and it's, so you decide what is overcrowding, not, not me and not some other authority. And you also have the, it helps prevent, it helps limit the size of structures and parcels, and another thing that that's what you do, it's not selected by somebody else, and that's what's in the zoning ordinance. Other benefits, it provides for economic development, it provides for having attractive commercial centers. Zoning regulates signs and keep commercial areas attractive and protect them, protect the public safety by having proper sign location. And of course, it establishes minimum setbacks, height limitation, and other building standards take into account adjoining property and other nearby properties. Those are basic benefits that we, we stipulate for zoning.
Doug.
Thanks, Bill. Now that we have that, kind of the basis of zoning and then the process, and we've talked about how we got to where we are today, I'm going to go ahead and dive into the, the new ordinance and kind of give you an overview of that. The first thing that you'll note is the fact that we have new zoning districts in the resi, excuse me, residential and agricultural zones, and if you have your document with you, the actual zoning ordinance, you can see this outlined in Chapter 3. We have residential and agricultural zones. You can see there's five different classifications there. We have an agro, we've identified an agricultural zone, which is a five-acre minimum lot size. We also have identified a residential low-density, which is a one-acre minimum lot size, and also what we're calling an RM, which is residential medium-density. That's the 15,000-square-foot minimum lot size in the RM. That's pretty much equivalent to the R-15 zone that we have today. If you really wanted to kind of compare and contrast what we have today with what we're proposing, that would be the 15,000-square-foot minimum, that'd be the R-15. The RL would be equivalent to an R-40-type zone. We do not have an agricultural zone. We also are, excuse me, identifying a residential multifamily. That would include duplexes, triplexes, quads, or apartment complexes, and then MHP, which would be our mobile home park. In the office and institutional zones, we don't really necessarily have any of those in the current document that we're under, but you see, we've identified a couple of those. Office professional, which kind of what we foresee there is just your general offices, medical offices, professional offices as far as maybe attorney's offices, or insurance agents, accounting, anything like that. Also, an institutional zone. An institutional zone, we kind of foresee educational facilities being approved by right, and that's what we've identified in our zoning document for those particular zones, along with other uses. And the commercial zones, I think we've simplified this to a, to a large extent. We've basically broken it down into three different commercial zones, and these are in order of intensity: commercial neighborhood, services, and then commercial general. Commercial neighborhood would be those commercial uses that you would expect to see near residential areas, convenience markets, smaller neighborhood scale type uses. Commercial services would allow a larger degree of uses in those zones, but the heavier commercial zones, uses rather, and those that may have more objectionable characteristics, like lots of traffic, noise, those kind of things, would be, would be prohibited. Commercial general would allow the most uses out of those three zones. Again, that would pretty much cover the range from your small neighborhood market all the way up to like car repair and larger-type commercial uses such as that. We've also broken down our industrial zones into two different classifications: light industrial, heavy industrial. Your light industrial would probably be more your light manufacturing, distribution-type facilities, whereas your heavy industrial would be your, just again, your, your heavier user, users as far as the, the type of industrial activity that you would see. We've also identified character areas. These are actually taken directly from the comprehensive plan. Rural centers, village neighborhood centers, and employment and activity centers. On the comprehensive plan, there's nodes throughout the county that are identified. Rural centers, examples of those would be like Milton, Las Cassas, Christiana, something like that. Village neighborhood centers are a little larger. Walter Hill would be an example of a village neighborhood center. And in your employment and activity centers, we've identified areas such as the Epsom Mill Road interchange area, as well as 840 and Alma Ville Road and 840, also in Jefferson Pike as employment areas. There is, there is one activity center identified for the county, and that's up near the racetrack up in that area. We don't see, on the map, you'll notice, there's not a whole lot of this particular zoning on the ground. The big reason that is, is because we feel that those centers, being that they're all unique in their own regard, they really need to have further study, and before we just say, okay, you're going to be a rural center, and all these certain, certain criteria are going to apply to you, these certain regulations are going to apply, we'd like to have the opportunity to go into those areas kind of individually and kind of study those areas in more detail. So you won't see just a whole lot. We have a small amount of rural center on the map and some employment activity center, but that's, that's pretty much it. Probably the largest change that we've done, and this deals with the land use classification and how we're handling uses in different zones. The first thing, and this is probably the biggest change that we made, is the Planning Commission and Board of Zone, and, excuse me, Board of Commissioners will no longer consider conditional use permit applications. Essentially, what will happen in your document, you'll see that there's a land use activity table, it's in the back, it's Appendix B, it's the fold-out page, looks kind of, looks like this in your document. The table will show proposed zones and activity classifications. The uses will either be permitted by right, which will be identified with a P, as permitted by right. They'll be permitted by special exception, which would be SE, or they would just not be permitted. And then in Appendix C, there's a land use classification index where individual uses are assigned an activity classification. Now, the activity classification would be residential, commercial, community assemble, or community facility activity, industrial, or agricultural. So those are the, the primary use classifications that there are. And then the activity classification goes under that, and I'll demonstrate this in a little bit, how that's going to work. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals, what we really like about is the Board, the Board of Zoning Appeals will be given the ability to rule on unlisted uses. If you look in the back of the document, you'll see there's a, again, the Appendix C, you'll see a land use index with just a, probably several, probably, I'd guess, hundreds of different uses and how they're classified. If for some reason, there's something in here that does not fit in any of these, the Board of Zoning Appeals would have the ability to say, okay, we feel that this should be listed under this particular activity classification, and they'll be able to make that distinction, and we'll be able to add it into the document at that time. Again, that's, I know it's kind of a mouthful, but I'll demonstrate how that works here in just a little bit. But at this point, I wanted to turn this back over to Bill to have him discuss the powers of Boards of Zoning Appeals, as well as the conditional use and special exception process.
Board of Zoning Appeals is, of course, required by state law. If you're going to have zoning, you've got to have the Board of Zoning Appeals, and it's given certain specific powers. And it's basically the relief valve. You can't cover everything in a zoning ordinance, and so the Board of Appeals is, is the relief valve in certain situations. The law you see listed there is the part of the Tennessee code that gives the Board of Appeals the power to consider special exceptions, and that, that power is given to the Board, and also the Board is given the power to interpret the map, offer decisions on other questions that the Board is authorized to pass. When I say it's authorized to pass, the ordinance which, which you will adopt in some form will say in certain circumstances that the Board of Appeals is authorized to rule on a certain issue. Conditional uses and special exceptions throughout zoning basics are the same thing. I know you've been treating them somewhat different here, but they are, for all practical purposes, exactly the same thing. And then we go back to the Tennessee code, and that, the code gives the power for review of special exceptions to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thing to keep in mind about a special exception is that this is a permitted use. It's just not permitted at each and every site in a particular district, because the use itself, in order to be a special exception, has got some type of characteristic which could create an impact on a joining property, or it could create an impact on systems in the community. So they are, they're considered to be something that needs to be looked at on a different level. And so that's why they're permitted on appeal. Another factor in dealing with special exceptions is that as the ordinance itself is adopted, there must be standards put in place that the Board has to consider when it reviews the request for a special exception. And these standards are specific to each type of use that is listed to be a special Some general rules that come out is the Board of Appeals may not act in a legislative capacity. In other words, they can't rule in such a way that it amends the zoning ordinance. That's a power reserved for the Board of Commissioners to amend the zoning ordinance. Special exceptions are permitted uses, as I mentioned. And if a use applies for a special exception to the Board of Appeals, and if that use meets all of the standards that are set out in the ordinance for it, then the Board says nothing upon which to turn it down, so that's why I say that it's a permitted use if the standards are met. The other powers of the Board of Appeals, I'm sure you've heard of the power to grant variances, that's a very controversial issue, that's also reserved for the Board. That power to grant variances is, is a, a situation where each individual lot or request has to be justified on the basis of the property on which it's located, it's not general. And then finally, there is the power of administrative review, and that means that the Board of Appeals, if an applicant is, is treated one way or another by the administrative staff on interpreting the zoning ordinance, they have the right to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals to see if that decision is in accord with the zoning ordinance itself, and that's called administrative review.
Doug, if I understand it correctly, and I, I think I do, the full commission is being taken out of the picture now. Well...
For the issuance of a conditional use, as it's called now.
Yes.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to stress on. I wanted all the county commissioners to understand that these type cases will not be coming to the full commission anymore. It'd be, it'd be done in these two entities, basically.
It's an administrative decision of the Board of Appeals, is the way it's considered, and the Board of Commissioners is, is not being removed because it's unimportant. The role of the Board of Commissioners is in the actual review and adoption of the ordinance, and all the standards that are contained in the ordinance, and then in the consideration of any amendments to the ordinance. And so that's where the commissioners enter into this whole scheme of things.
And on a great deal of the cases, the Planning Commission is being taken out as well, because a lot of it's just going to go straight to the BZA. The BZA is fixing, got a whole lot of power from both the County Commission and the Planning Commission.
For conditional use permits, or what we're going to call special exceptions. Now, understand as well that some of these commercial uses, and I mean, a good deal of these commercials, that we're going to be looking at, depending on the zone that they're located, and of course, a lot of them are going to have to be rezoned. You know, if you have a particular piece of property, somebody wants to put a particular use on a piece of property, the first thing they're going to have to do is make sure that the property is zoned in the manner that it has to be in order to even have a special exception. So in the first thing that they'll have to do is get the property rezoned. Now, that will still come to the Planning Commission, and that will still come to the Board of Commissioners. You will still look at rezoning applications, that won't change. The conditional use permit process, that'll basically be an extra step. If they have the proper zoning that they need, they get the proper zoning, then they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to get the, the special exception from them. So if anything, if they're having to rezone property, you're actually adding an additional step here. So I just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody. When we look at the zoning map later, you'll still see that pretty much 90% or so of the land in the unincorporated area is still zoned for residential purposes. That means if there is the need for them to look at the possibility of rezoning property for commercial purposes, that'll still have to come before you. That, that's not going to go away. Okay? You'll still have to get, you'll still get the vote on whether or not to rezon the property. Now, there may be uses that are permitted by right in commercial zones. At that point, then they just require site plans. There may be some that do require special exceptions. At that point, those would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Doug, I have a follow-up question on that. On the slide where it says that conditional uses and special exceptions, these are the same thing, are they, are special exceptions going to be... Are they, are special exceptions going to be permanent? Are they going to be temporary? Because you know, with conditional uses, right now, we can have them, you know, expire with the sale of the property, things like that. How will special exceptions work in that?
Well, as far as how they work, I mean, with special exceptions, you will be able to put reasonable standards on special exceptions, the same way you do a conditional use permit. Now, if that would be, you know, expiring upon sale or transfer of property, I think that could still be done. From a, my personal opinion on that is, I don't know if that's necessary in every single case. Again, and I know we've talked about this at Planning Commission, from a staff standpoint, that can become problematic from time to time because a lot of the times, we don't know when property transfers. So if somebody, generally what happens is with a special exception is granted, it runs with the land. So if somebody sells the property to somebody else who wants to use it in that same manner, under those same parameters it was approved under, they can continue to do that. If they want to change what they're doing, that's when they would have to bring it back to us. So, you know, you know, in, in theory, property could change hands numerous times if they're operating under the same parameters and we, we may never know that. So that can become problematic from, from an enforcement standpoint.
So, so we are going to, so we're going to treat the special exceptions slightly differently than we've done the conditional uses from that standpoint? Because I know most of the time, as I recall, seems like when we've done conditional use permits, we have stipulated that it, you know, it's for that owner at that moment in time, and that if anything changes, you know, and, and also it can come up on review, like if there are complaints and things like that, it can be reconsidered. Would that be the case with a special exception as well?
Yeah, I mean, that, that part doesn't change, you know, as far as if they can be reconsidered or even revoked. I mean, tho- those powers won't go away.
So would that be through like a codes complaint? Would codes complain?
Well, generally, yes. A complaint would be made to our code enforcement office, and of course, whenever we get a complaint, we would check them out. Now, if it's without merit, then obviously they're allowed to, to proceed as, as, as they're operating. If we do find merit to it, of course, I think the first thing we always try to do is try to get compliance, you know, kind of let them know, okay, you're doing these things incorrectly based on how you were approved, you need to fix these things. If they insist on not fixing them, then ultimately we can bring them back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and have that permit, have a public hearing to have it revoked.
And I just wanted to follow up on that too. Since we're giving so much new authority to the Board of Zoning Appeals, are they going to receive any additional training?
Yes, I mean, they will. Now, they're, they're getting additional authority in the sense that they may see more activity, but I mean, they consider conditional use permits now, they consider variances now, and they also consider the administrative appeals, which we don't see very often. But they're not getting new authority as far as that's concerned, they just may see more activity. But we'll give them the same amount of training, I mean, they're required by law to have the same amount of training as planning commissioners do. So we'll make sure that that is done. But again, they're not really getting, what, what will be happening with them really won't be anything new, because they're already operating in that manner now.
Doug, inadvertently, they are being, getting more authority because it's been taken out of county commissioners' hand. Inadvertently, they, they are getting more power, more, more authority. Because if, if the county commission now has the final say-so, once that's taken out of county commissioners' hand or the planning commissioners' hand, they are having, getting more authority.
Well, again, it's the same authority that they currently have, and it's the same type of cases that they're currently considering. It's just, we're routing them to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which, based on the discussion we've had today, is really the appropriate area for them as opposed to the planning commission and Board of Commissioners.
What other local jurisdiction close by here is, is, is doing it this way now?
Say that again.
What other local jurisdiction around us here, other counties, other cities or whatever, that's, that's, that's doing it the way it's proposed?
Pretty much everyone I can think of.
Virtually all of them. This is the only case I know of where the legislative body actually approves and issues a conditional use permit. It's pretty unique.
Give me an example on a rural center and what would be allowed to be put in there?
A rural center, again, an example of a rural center as we identified in the comprehensive plan would be one of your smaller hamlet areas, like a Christiana, Milton, something like that. If you look in the back of the, in appendix B where the sheet is, there'd be, the dwelling, and we propose those to be kind of mixed use areas as well. So there'd be allowed various, single family, even multifamily duplexes. Of course, they have to meet certain standards, you know, in those areas. Commercial uses would primarily be your smaller type uses, we wouldn't allow larger commercial, commercial type uses. Animal care, veterinarian services is an example by right, consumer repair, entertainment, amusement services.
Oh.
I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Food and beverage services, smaller type neighborhood.
Talking about like a store.
Sorry.
Like a store.
Small store.
Person who puts a store.
Yeah, I think we identified general retail trade, five thousand square feet or less in those areas by right. If it's more than five thousand square feet, it would have to be done by special exception. But we're, we're really looking to keep them small in, in, in the rural centers. Yes, sir.
Doug, for some of the-
Go ahead, Doug.
That'd go through planning right there.
What now? I'm sorry.
I was planning for a rural center. Just say I was, that'd be go through the planning, it wouldn't go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
If you wanted the actual zoning rural center, is that what you're asking? Yes. The, the actual zoning of the property rural center would have to come through the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners. Yes, sir.
Doug, would you explain, some of the commissioners that are on a perimeter, the lot sizes that they would have with the step, without the step?
We're going to get to that a little later in the presentation. Yes, sir.
What about rock quarries and mobile home parks?
That's going to be in there as well. Yes, sir.
Doug, back to conditional use permits and rezonings and the Board of Zoning Appeals. The way I understand it now is, and, and as Commissioner Sanders, I think I do, in the past, we've done them all at once. You know, it's been a rezoning and conditional use permit, it's gone to the planning commission, to the county commission, and it's just been done. The way it's going to be if this is all approved, if it's a rezoning and conditional use permit, they're going to go to the planning commission and the county commission and get the rezoning, and then the BZA and get their conditional use permit, to some extent. They stand the risk of getting rezoned and then getting turned down at the BZA. So they could have properties, property zoned at a higher tax rate and different things, and not get to do their business where the way it is now is a little bit safer for the individual, but, but the county commission still gets to see those rezonings. And if the county commission feels it's inappropriate to rezone that piece of property, then we can stop it before it ever gets to the BZA.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
But it is a little riskier for the applicant.
Well, I mean, I think it adds an extra step. And I mean, understand too, that not all uses in the various commercial zones are special exceptions. There are some that are going to be permitted by right. So to an extent, that's going to drive the zoning classification that an applicant's going to ask for. They're going to ask for the classification where they can do what they want to by right. Now, there are some uses where that's not going to be an option, they're going to have to get special exceptions for them. But for the most part, that, that'll be a deciding factor in what they ask for to begin with.
They're doing a use that's permitted in that zone, and it's basically going through the same course it's going now. Planning commission, county commission, if it's a listed use, permitted use, then they're doing business just exactly like they are now.
That's correct. At that point, they would just be site plans or plaits or what have you. Yes, sir.
Planning commission would still review site plans.
Right, that doesn't, that, and we'll, we'll get into that too as far as the processes, the existing processes that are still in place that will continue.
I was trying to relate to the county commissioners up here, they're still going to see this, the rezonings.
Right.
And if it is a permitted use, then that's going to be the end of the story, just like it is now, beside the site plan, which is another step, you know.
That's right.
Right now, the structure on the planning commission, it's got four elected officials on it representing the planning, no elected officials on BZA.
Yeah, the BZA is appointed, that's correct.
Right, is any of the other counties that you've, you did, how, how is it structured as far as the BZA?
If there are elected officials serving on a Board of Zoning Appeals anywhere, I'm not aware of them. I'm not seeing that they don't, but I'm not aware of it. Generally, the issues that the Board of Zoning Appeals takes up, particularly with regard to special exceptions, are fairly controversial. Otherwise, they wouldn't be a special exception. And it's, it's really one of the toughest jobs in a community to serve on the BZA.
I just don't feel comfortable with no elected officials serving, not serving on BZA. There's four on planning commission, I think there ought to be some elected officials to answer to the people on some of these zoning issues. That's just my opinion.
Now, that being said, I mean, keep in mind, you do appoint the people to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So while you may, there may not be elected officials directly on the board, those people who are appointed are appointed by the full county commission.
True, but they're appointed on the planning commission by the county mayor and also the county commissioners also is appointed by the county mayor. And I, I just feel that it ought to be some elected officials appointed or ever how elected by the steering, serving on the BZA. With it being, a lot of the issues being in a rural area, I just, I just don't feel comfortable. There ought to be somebody there that is selected to have to answer to the people's concerns. That's just my opinion.
Doug, we, we looked at that issue. It came up in the steering committee last month, the question of whether or not county commissioners could serve on the BZA. So we looked at it. And we concluded that the county commissioners cannot serve on the BZA. The rationale being that the statute that provides for the creation of the BZA does not expressly allow county commissioners to serve. There's a general common law principle in Tennessee where the county commission has the authority to appoint to a board, that they cannot appoint themselves unless the statute specifically says you can. So for example, with the planning commission, the statute that, that creates the planning commission expressly says county commissioners can serve on that board, which is why you can put county commissioners on there. The statute authorizing the creation of a BZA does not say that. And like Mr. Terry was pointing out earlier, in Tennessee, if there's not a statute that says you can do it, you can't do it. And so by extension, where the statute providing for the creation of the BZA does not expressly allow county commissioners to serve, our conclusion is you can't.
Doug, I have a question, it's a follow-up from Will's point. Now that we're making this a two-step process, will your office collect any additional fees? Like, or will fees go up for applicants? Because now there's two steps to this as opposed to one.
The, the fee structure that we have currently, of course, that's approved by the, the full county commission as well. We're not proposing any changes to that at this point. Our rezoning application fees would remain unchanged. And if there is a second step in the process where they have to ask for a special exception, and again, that won't be for all uses, but if there is an extra step in the process, then they will have to pay that extra fee, because it's an extra, I mean, there's administrative costs with that, advertising costs, whatnot, so.
Doug, I think what some of the uncomfortable feelings that the county commissioners have is their voice being heard. And of course now, even right now, the county commissioner, if something's going on in your district, can go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, can go to planning and, and voice your opinion on whatever it may be. The, a few of the calls that I've, that I've gotten and a few of the statements that I've received is, is the, the tougher issues, the, the huge subdivision that's got Ferris wheels and stuff going on and, and bull riding in the back or whatever, I don't know, you know, just crazy stuff. And then, and then the tough ones, you know, the rock quarries that nobody wants, the, the landfills that nobody wants, the theme parks that maybe, you know, the mobile home parks, stuff like that. You know, is, is the county commission going to have a say on that? And if it meets the requirements, we're not. But if it, you know, we are under that committee, but we're not as a full commission body, per se.
Well, I guess the, to answer your question, are you involved in the process, like what you're talking about, as far as the residential community that has, well, you know, different, what you're explaining there might be more like a planned development approach or something like that. The quick answer to that question is yes, you would be involved in that process because PUDs, planned unit developments, those are going to be their own zones, and that's going to have to be a rezoning that the county commission and planning commission will have to act on. The issues that you're talking about as far as like your rock quarries or your-
Let's stop right there just a second. Even though they comply, the full commission and planning commission is still going to see it.
They're still going to see it in the regard that they would have to zone the property. Yeah, yes, that is correct. I'm sorry, if that's what you're asking, then yes.
I'm just trying to get you to, to say it clear.
Right.
About the role here the full commission still has and what we don't have.
Right. If, let's just, for the sake of argument, somebody finds six hundred acres and they want to look at the possibility of putting in a rock quarry. The property's going to be more than likely, again, ninety percent of the area out in the unincorporated area is still going to be zoned residential. So more than likely, they are going to have to ask for rezoning of the property. That's still going to come to the planning commission for a recommendation, that's still going to come to the Board of Commissioners for their final approval. Assuming it gets final approval, even after that, they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and meet those standards for whatever use, be it a rock quarry, you name the use, whatever is a special exception identified in the zone they asked for, they're still going to have to prove to the Board of Zoning Appeals that they do meet those standards. So I guess to answer your question, yes, they are still, you, you, those kind of issues you will still see from the zoning standpoint. Okay, not from the special exception or conditional use permit standpoint, but actually allowing them to zone the property in a way that they have to have it in order to even ask for that.
So Doug, if it's outside the approved use of what is determined in the zoning, that's when it's got to go to the, the BZA?
But when you say outside the approved use, do you mean outside of what's allowed in that particular zone?
Allowable use.
Yeah. If it's not an allowable use in a zone and they have to ask for a rezoning of the property, that will still come here to you. That'll still go to the planning commission for their recommendation, that'll still come before you for final approval, just like we do rezonings today. That doesn't change.
What we're basically doing is separating the legislative function from the administrative Legislative Board of Commissioners, administrative under certain types of situations as they are listed in the zoning ordinance, BZA.
Well, I guess I'm confused. On the planning commission, we got four county commissioners. Why do we have to have them on there then?
What, after what?
Why do we got to have elected officials on the planning? If that falls upon the state umbrella, I guess I'm going to ask you that.
Because the, the statute that provides for the creation of a planning commission specifically says that county commissioners will serve on that body. The same thing is not true of the statute that creates the BZA. When you look at the statute that creates the BZA, it does not say that. Is that-
Has it ever been any elected official served on the BZA?
In our county?
Yes, sir.
I can't answer that question. I don't know the answer.
Did you research it and could you find out?
I don't.
And present it at the next steering commission, meeting, committee?
That's the viability.
I can answer that question for you. Yes, it have. Zane Cantrell, myself, and then it was another commissioner that was Philside at the college, I can't call his name. But it was three commissioners that served on the BZA until it was challenged. When it was challenged, they were removed from the BZA. Zane Cantrell is still on there because he's not a commissioner anymore, but it was three on there.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure that all of us have an understanding of what the, the new roles with the planning commission and the county commission would be. Let me just try to put it simply the way I understand it. If someone has a piece of property and they want to put something on that piece of property, maybe that's other than residential, they have to apply for a zoning. And that zoning goes before the planning commission and then goes before the full county commission. If the, the list of use by right under that zoning is approved, then it does not have to go to the BZA, correct?
If it's used by right, then you're correct, it does not have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
If, if it's all the listed uses under that new zone, it doesn't go before the BZA. If what they want to use that property for is not under that list, then they go to the BZA and that's where the administrative end comes in. They'll make an exception if they think it's needed, but if they don't think that it's needed or pertinent, then they won't make that exception. That's as simply as I know how to- That's as simply as I know how to put it. If a person wants a piece of property rezoned, it goes before both of these bodies, Planning Commission and County Commission. If the use by right listed under that zone is not there, then it has to go before the BZI to get that approved. And the reason, main reason that this may be used initially is because we don't know that we've covered everything under those zones. And that's where all of the adjustments as time goes by will have to be made. So it's an administrative portion of it. Did I say that right, Will?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I mean, that's, that's one of the things that we can't say, I don't think, in black and white here, that we as elected officials have to stand up for our constituents and say, as well as our constituents, as a public hearing, as well as the integrity of the community, the traffic, the lighting, the sound, the noise, the smell, the list goes on and on and on, you know, whatever it may be that's coming into your community. And that's the point that, that I'm trying to say as well as some Commissioners in making sure that, that my elected position is still representing my community and I can still do that with a rezoning. And that's the main thing that I don't want to speak for anybody else. That's what I'm saying. Because I do want to have an opinion or, or a voice either at the planning level or the rezoning level or the full commission level, and as well as my constituents. And that's, that's, you know, when, when you, and we've been in those meetings plenty of times when people put their hard-earned money and their investments into their home and then something comes into that community that wasn't there before. And it may well just be a subdivision just like theirs, but it wasn't there and they don't like it. And so they want to make sure it goes and meets all the codes that theirs had to and that it's built to a certain degree, which the state is trying to make sure every county has those same standards. And that's, that's what I'm saying, is that we make sure that all that is done.
I think it's, it's my belief that as a Planning Commissioner and a County Commissioner both, I want to know why you're rezoning that piece of property. And if it's not on that list, they'll still have to go to the BZI, but we'll know.
And quite frankly, there are, I mean, just to clarify something, there are certain uses in different zones, depending on what zone you're in, that you just simply cannot do it. It's not a case of you have to go to the BZI for any use that's not permitted by right. There are some uses that will be permitted by right. That means after they're rezoned, they just go through site plan and review process. There are some uses that are allowed by special exception, which means they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals even after they're rezoned. But then there's other uses that you just can't do, and those will be identified within, on that chart that we talked about on Appendix B. If it says N on there, you can't go to the BZI to do it. You just, you just simply cannot do it in that zone.
All of this is really good questions, and you need to understand, this is what the, kind of the Planning Commission has gone through and for a number of, or the last few months, and your questions are pertinent. So Jack, if you, if you still have any confusion, let's, let's just talk it out and make sure we get it straight. It's not, it's not anything that we want to cut short.
Right now, I'm going to reflect on what's been said, watch the meeting again, and I mean, I don't, I don't know if I can make a decision tonight to vote for this. I'm going to have to listen to the people that I represent. I think y'all did a lot, a lot of work. But as a rural Commissioner, I'd still got a lot of concerns. I know we appoint the ones on the BZI. I, you know, I got faith and I don't know them, you know, I know a few of them, but a lot of times, it's a, it's a lot of things that comes before them and I just, I don't, I just, I get uncomfortable about it, and I guess that's how I feel, so.
And if I can clarify, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Black, but I just hope everybody understands, we're not expecting a decision tonight. This is, this is a work session, and we'll talk about future steps, you know, a little later in the presentation. But I mean, really, the whole purpose of having this meeting is for these kind of discussions that we're having right now. So nobody's expecting any decisions tonight.
Doug, and if we are casting more responsibility on the BZI, we could look into adding number of members. I know some of them, I go to BZI meeting and there's five people, five members are there, that's a quorum, and it takes three people to pass or fail something, and that's bothers me a little bit sometime. We might look at increasing the number to maybe nine, where they had to have a little higher, or have more people show up or something like that.
The state statutes dictate how many you can have on there. Now, the top might get, I don't remember.
Dictate that, okay. I didn't know if that was left up to municipal, how many members were on a BZI.
Without having it right in front of me, I just don't recall what the exact number is, but there is a limit to the numbers you can have.
I got one more question. Should we as a body send a resolution to the state getting this amended about elected officials serving on this particular meeting, Board of Zoning?
That's always an option, I suppose, but...
Your attorney.
No, probably. You could probably do a private act to deal with your, your BZI if you wanted to. I mean, that's not something I've looked at specifically, but in most instances, private acts are an option, so I guess that may be something you could attempt.
I got a question. It comes up every time we zone a convenience store, Dollar General, about the beer permits. You know, we have a beer board, and as far as my knowledge and my research, the, if we allow beer sales in the county, we have to follow the state rules. They're the ones that regulate beer sales. So are we supposed to be voting whether they can sell beer in our commission meetings as part of that, or do we need to let the beer board do that? So it's kind of going on the same lines of what the zoning appeal does. The beer board would be administrative body of beer sales in this county.
Under the new...
I think, I think we're kind of doing it wrong, and I was kind of wondering, because if we start zoning stuff, commercial businesses, it's not, we don't choose that, they, they make sure it's the proper distances and the, all that application process is met. Do y'all answer that question, or?
Under the, what I will say is under the proposed code that we're talking about tonight, we don't make a differentiation as far as like restaurants and whatnot about whether or not they sell alcohol. You know, we pretty much, like you said, leave that up to the State Board. We don't really address that. Now, I mean, you'll see something in here about bars, taverns, and where they're permitted and where they're not, those kind of things, but we really don't get into whether or not a restaurant or a store can sell packaged beer or not based on, I mean, again, we just leave that, we leave that up to that, that Board that you're talking about.
Well, I was asking, because that happens every time we have something in here, and it's kind of procedurally wrong of us trying to jump the gun. It should be left up to that other body to make sure that everything's intact. That's what I was, it's kind of the same thing with the BZI's going to be doing with this concept. The BZI's going to be making sure everything's following what we've set forth and the guidelines for the zoning ordinance.
Right. I mean, the BZI, and even the Planning Commission and you as Board of Commissioners, what you'll be going by are the regulations in here. Now, that doesn't excuse an applicant from anything else that they have to do outside of this document, like you said, be at the beer board, you know, if they have to get from the Health Department as far as food sales and those kind of things, whatever other state regulations exist, they'll still have to abide by those. But the decisions that are made by the County Commission, Planning Commission, and Board of Zoning Appeals would be done with what's in this document. If there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and continue on with the presentation. We talked about a little, a little earlier about how the land use classification system worked, and I kind of want to give you just a couple of examples of how that's going to take effect. What you're seeing here is kind of the hierarchy of the uses. Your activity classification, which is basically your residential, commercial, industrial activity. Activity type, which, well, I'll tell you what, I'll just go ahead and go to the next slide, it'll make more sense. Commercial activities, again, would be your activity classification. Your activity type may be general retail trade. Under general retail trade, you may have certain uses like department stores, hardware stores, retail nurseries, those kind of things. Chapter two really goes into a lot more detail in the document as far as what falls under what classification. But this kind of shows you just a quick breakdown of how that would work. Now, as an example, if somebody comes in and the developer wants to request, he wants to know first of all, he says, I want to know what the allowable zones are to construct a bank. As staff, the first thing we would do would be consult Appendix C, which is that classification index at the back of the document to determine how the use is classified. And if you flip back to that, this is what you'll see. Under B, you have banking and bank-related functions. Those are classified under financial, consultative, and administrative services. Okay? So now we know what banks are classified as. That's their classification. Step two, we consult the Appendix B, which is that fold-out chart, the land use activity table for the allowable zones. Based on that particular classification, you can see it's not permitted at all in either the, in either residential zones or the agricultural zone, which is the AR. It is allowed by right, it's permitted by right, in the office professional, the three commercial zones, the two industrial zones, and the three special area zones, which are those, especially the village neighborhood center, rural centers, and your employment activity centers. So at that point, you know, these are the class of, these are the areas that they can look at to place a bank or some sort of a financial institution. From there, they would either seek rezoning of the property if the property is not zoned for that particular use. They would seek a rezoning of the property, or if it's already zoned the proper way, they would just consult Chapter 11, which shows our site plan, and for the site plan requirements, which... Also, step four, at that point, they would just follow the normal Planning Commission process. After, if assuming a property was, if it wasn't rezoned, if it wasn't zoned properly and they got it rezoned, or if it was already zoned properly, then they would just go through the site plan review and think a site plan to the Planning Commission for their review. That's just a brief overview of how that would work. Now, I'm seeing some looks out there. I'll just ask if there's questions about that, about how that works. If that's, if someone thinks that's a little confusing, I'd be more happy to go through it again or answer any questions on that. If not, I do have another example that might clarify that some as well. Example B, and this is something that we do see fairly often. Applicant requests permission to operate a group childcare home in the RM zone. Now, remember, the RM zone is the equivalent of our R-15. So basically, kind of what we envision here is somebody in a subdivision maybe wants to open up a small daycare out of their home. So the steps are fairly similar. First thing we do is first of all, figure out how the use is classified in the zoning on Appendix C. And you can see childcare homes, either family or group, and those definitions, the family group are actually defined by the state as far as the number of children that you're able to care for. Those are classified as personal and group care facilities. So now that we know that, we consult Appendix B to find out how and what zones it would be allowed in. I remember they're already in the RM zone, so we're seeing here that they're permitted by special exception, which means they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for that approval. And you can see step three, they'd consult Chapter 14 for special exception requirements. We do have some for, for personal and group care facilities, for family group daycare as a deal with the required lot yard, lot-sized yard bulk requirements. All requirements the state of Tennessee shall be met, and then facilities for vehicular access shall be arranged to permit vehicles to exit the site without having to back onto any street. And then from that point, the request would be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that's just a kind of a quick overview of how that example would work. Some other changes that we've made throughout the document, and again, we'll just kind of give you just a overview of some of the larger ones. Religious facilities are going to be classified as community assembly, and you can see that again in Chapter 2 of the document. Right now, the way that religious uses are classified, they're basically classified as permitted uses by right in residential zones. We've changed that based on the different categories, as you can see on the screen, a small assembly, medium assembly, and large assembly. And again, community assembly, this deals more with just religious facilities. There's more involved than, in that category than just that, but it is lumped into that category with other uses. And we've, what we've done is by seating capacity, and essentially seating capacity of the largest area on the lot. So if you have a seating capacity for fewer than 150 people, you're considered a small assembly. If it's between 150 and 500, you're considered medium. Anything greater than 500 would fall under large assembly. And as you can see on the chart that's on the screen, not all of these assemblies are permitted by right in all the zones. You'll see smalls are probably the most allowable in the different zones all the way across there. Mediums, you start seeing them getting into special exceptions, still permitted in some zones, but mostly special exceptions. The large, you can see, are not even permitted in the residential zones. They don't become permitted until you're in the institutional zone, and then special exception in your commercial zones. So that was one of the bigger changes that we made to the document based on how we, as compared to how we do it today. Sir?
Which one of those is not permitted by use by right?
Well, anything that doesn't have a P is not permitted by right. SE means special exception, which would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. N means it's just not permitted. If he's in a medium, a lot of it depends on the zone he's in. If he's in a medium and he's in the residential zone, at that point, we'd recommend that he be rezoned institutional, which is why we brought, that's pretty much why we created that zone to begin with, was for that and for other uses.
Are all three going to have to be, be rezoned?
Not necessarily. The small and the medium, they are allowed in residential zones. If it's under the 150 people, they're allowed by right. If it's between 150 and 500, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You know, they, they wouldn't have to rezon the property, but they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If they start getting larger than 500 people, that's when we would require the rezoning to the institutional zone.
Doug, I remember we had some discussion about including a square footage thing besides the seated capacity, because you could have a church with 149 seating capacity in the, whatever area you do this, determine size, and also have, but it could be 25,000 square feet with a, you know, recreational facility, a gymnasium, and things like that. Did we include any of that? I remember a discussion about that, because I, you know...
Well, what we ended up doing on that was, the way we worded that section was, it's divided into three categories, as you see, and it's the maximum, it's defined by the maximum occupancy in the largest assembly area. So like you said, if they have a sanctuary area, they can seat 100 people, but they have a gymnasium that's like 20,000 square feet, whatever could seat the largest amount of people would be the controlling factor. So that, that's how we, that's how we handled that.
How are you going to figure out the occupancy amount when we don't have any fire codes adopted in this county?
Well, that, we would, we would discuss that with our building code director, because there are building codes for that. I don't know if necessarily, like you said, we don't have fire codes, but I do believe that there are building code standards for that as far as square footage per seat and how much, there are ways to figure that out outside of that, I think. If there's no other questions on that, we'll go ahead and continue forward. There was some discussion earlier that I heard regarding, you know, concerns for noise, vibration, those kind of things. Some other changes we put in this document is we do have performance standards, which is located in Chapter 11 of the document. And these are general standards for noise, vibration, and I won't go through all these, but you can see that glare, radioactive materials, all those kind of things, that there will be specific performance standards for those type, I mean, pretty much for any commercial type use. So you do see that we have included that in this document as well, and these are things that really don't exist in our document today. These were, these were new additions to that. I'm not going to go into any specific details. I will say that we did run these by our codes director before we put them in the final draft that was distributed, and he looked at them and said that he'd be fine enforcing what, what was proposed. So he has had a chance to look at all that. Not necessarily a large change as far as the text is concerned, but a change as far as the process that we have. Something that we have struggled with since my time here with the county has been regulations for accessory buildings, as far as like detached garages, sheds, those kind of things. That's, this section of the zoning resolution's probably been, it's probably been amended more times than any other one we've had since I've been here. And one of the battles that we constantly fight with this is, of course, you don't want accessory buildings to just overtake the lot, but at the same time, if somebody has 200, 300 acres, is it fair to hold them to the same standards as you'd hold somebody that maybe had five acres or six acres? So what we decided to do was, on an acre or less, we would allow a total of 2,000 square feet of all... feet of all combined square footage for any detached accessory buildings. Now, the way we currently do it, it's one acre or less, you're allowed 1,200 square feet. If you have basically 1.01 acres to 4.99, you're allowed 1,800 square feet, and if you have five acres or greater, you're allowed 2,500 square feet. And again, that doesn't matter if you've got five acres or 500 acres. So what we're proposing at this point is, if you have an acre or less, you're allowed 2,000 square feet. If you have more than an acre, it would just be based on your lot area. So that gives larger tract owners more area to use than somebody that just has two or three acres. Yes, sir?
Doug, are you saying that if you have an acre or less, and you've got, say you've got a 1,500 square foot home on that, on that acre, are you saying that they can actually add another 2,000 square foot building to it?
That's correct. To detached accessory space. Now, they still will have to abide by lot coverage standards and all of that. You know, we do have lot coverage standards that will be in this new document that say it's 20% or 25% of the property, you know, just depending on what zone you're in. So even if they're allowed 2,000 square feet, but if they did that, that'd be over the amount of lot coverage they could have, then that would still kick in.
The reason I bring that question up is because at one, at one time, this was before your position as director, it was the prior director, I had a situation where someone built another house on a, on a less than acre lot, and it basically was problems. So was that right there? Can that happen?
Well, you mean building a second residence on a dwelling, on a, on a lot that size? We have regulations for accessory dwelling units that that would fall under, you know, that they would have to get special approval for some of those kind of things. A lot of it depends on the size of the property, as well as the size of the accessory dwelling unit they're proposing to, to put in. I will say that we're keeping in the provision that counts, if you have a finished second floor, that part, that counts as part of the square footage. So if, let's say he builds a 500 square foot outbuilding, and he has a second floor that he finishes, the whole 500 foot upstairs, that counts as a thousand foot, even though he's only covering 500. So that...
But if you've got a subdivision, it's just a small lot, regular 15,000 square foot lot, we don't need to have him two different houses on there in a subdivision, I wouldn't think.
Well, again, there is the ability to have an accessory dwelling unit. Now, under an acre, I believe those have to automatically go to the Board of Zoning Appeals anyway. So he couldn't just say, "I'm going to build another house on this property." They still have to meet those standards of accessory dwelling units, and they have to be, you know, they have to be accessory to the primary use of the property. You know, if somebody wanted to do like a mother-in-law apartment or something like that, you know, that would still have to, there, there still are provisions in here that deal with that situation that you're referring to. I don't think you would ever get a situation where somebody would just up and build a house one day on a 15,000 square foot lot. There'd be too, there'd be too many other...
It'd happen.
Right, and I'm just saying, they're, based on the regulations we're proposing, and even some of the amendments we've made in our current regulations, there'd be other things that they would have to abide by before they would ever get to that point, so...
You're saying that on an acre or less, they could not put, by that right there, they couldn't put a 2,000 square foot?
They could put a 2,000, up to a 2,000 square foot detached accessory structure. Again, that, that doesn't mean a new house. That means like a garage with a possible second floor.
Is there anywhere that says it can't be a? So you're saying all accessory structures? An accessory structure is not, is not a residence?
No, if you look under our definition, and I think that, that's kind of where we go under our definitions, when you look at what an accessory structure is, anything accessory, and it's just defined as accessory, is an activity, building, or structure that's customarily associated with and is appropriately incidental and subordinate to a principal activity, which would be a house in this case, and/or building or structure, and located on the same zone lot, except as provided for under the provisions of accessory off-street parking, which that's just, that doesn't really apply to what you're talking about. So I, I, I don't think, and I understand that, what, the situation you're referring to, but I don't think, if somebody wanted to do something like that, we would, first of all, if somebody came to us and said, "Well, I've got a house on here, I want to build another 2,000 square foot home on my property," I mean, the first thing we'd say is, well, that, only the way you can do that is through an accessory dwelling unit. And the only way you can do that is through the Board of Zoning Appeals, and there are standards that they have to meet in order to do that. That's not something they could just do by right. Now, if they come in and say, "I want to put a 1,000 square foot garage," they go ahead and do that, and then we find out after the fact that somewhere along the line, they installed the kitchen and all these other things, that's when zoning enforcement would become involved.
So you're telling me it can't happen?
Well, I'm telling you it's against the regulations. Again, I can't, I can't help what people do once they, once they get out there, but, you know...
What do you count? I'm a mobile home.
I'm sorry?
Situation of a mobile home, they're all over the county, like, there's many structure on a lot, but it is a house, a brick house, whatever, and then there's a mobile home put on there. It's got maybe a thousand, four hundred square feet. Now, that...
Well, it...
Is the mobile home is accessory or is such?
Well, it's accessory in the fact that maybe it's smaller than the house, but it's also a principal use, as far as I'm concerned, because the principal use is, especially in a residential area, the principal use of a property, of a structure would be to live in it. That would be the principal use. Now, and I, I know they're all over the county, and at the same time, now, there are certain regulations that we have even currently today, that if you have 15 acres of land, we do allow the ability to place a second principal structure on a piece of property. And that could be a mobile home. It could be a double-wide, it could be another stick-built home. We do make that allowance, and that is, that's current, and that is something we moved over into our new document as well. But as far as, like you said, if somebody wanted to move a mobile home onto a piece of property, already had a house on it, again, that's not a by right issue, you know, that, that's something that they're wanting to use as an accessory dwelling unit. It's not, there's issues with that. Plus, it, it has the ability to, I mean, and I know that they exist over the county, but, I mean, there are instances out there where you see two or three on a lot, and that starts becoming the point where you start considering a mobile home park. So it, to my mind, it's still a principal use at that point.
But what I'm saying is, a lot of times, you'll say, hey, they have a house on it. One of their kids gets married, they got a place to live there, and they're saying it's a mobile home on the block. Now, is it a size, before they can do that, is the size, what if it's almost three quarters an acre or an acre?
No. I mean, there's the ability to do an accessory dwelling unit, but again, with, when it comes to mobile homes, you know, at that point, we would want to talk with the people and find out what they're wanting to do. Yeah, I mean, I think current, I mean, even currently, we have something that stops that, yeah.
There are, actually, if someone bought a 1,500 square foot lot, built a house, and then two years later moved a mobile home on that lot, we don't have an ordinance to allow that. It would not be allowed by ordinance, right? It would not be allowed.
I don't believe so.
Right. That's the way I understand it. Will?
Can you, just to make sure I'm clear, can you restate that just one more? When you asked me, I was kind of trying to look up something, just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Someone had a regular lot in a subdivision, 1,500 square feet. Couple of years later, they moved a mobile home in it. They're not allowed to do that.
Not by right, no.
So the only exception that we got into a couple of years ago were storm damage, when someone had a house that was greatly damaged by the storm. There's exceptions to that, and we allow them to move in a temporary living structure as they rebuild. So there are those exceptions, but as far as a second dwelling or a mobile home, it's not allowed according, the way I understand it, according to code. There's only one primary residence allowed on that lot. Doug was saying that, that there are exceptions as far as accessory structures. If you had a lot that's big enough to allow an accessory structure to build a mother-in-law apartment, those are the type of exceptions that would probably be favorably looked upon.
I understand, but this is...
Yeah, I know the one that you're talking about. Under these regulations, they, it wouldn't be allowed, however, doesn't mean that they're not out there. Doug probably can take you to half a dozen, I mean, it sounds like he probably could, but...
And let me say, I'm, and forgive me, I'm kind of looking up something as the discussion's going, and I'm looking up that specific section on accessory dwelling units as ADUs. There are certain accessory dwelling units that do require special exceptions, no matter what they are. One of them is any application for an accessory dwelling unit that involves a mobile home. So that is regardless of what property it's on. So if somebody wants to do that as an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, that has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals based on these regulations. And again, that's, we pretty much copy these regulations from what we have existing today. So again, you'll, just forgive me, I'm just trying to make sure I'm answering your questions accurately, so...
Accessory structures, does that include pools and decks?
Yes. Pools, however, are not counted in that calculation. We, actually, I think about a year or so ago, we actually changed that, even in our current regulations, where we don't count pools in the square footage calculations. They do, they are considered accessory, but we don't count the square footage of a pool in that total square footage. And something else, and you can see on the slide, on the, on the, on the screen there, we do not count agricultural buildings either. And that, that's currently how, we don't count them today either, so that, that's not But as far as pools are concerned, for setback purposes and everything, they are considered accessory, but we just don't count them in the square footage of them. Some other carryover sections, Chapter 10 dealing with flood hazard districts, that's pretty much unchanged from what we have today, with the exception of maybe a few tweaks here and there, just to make sure they fit within the zoning structure as far as the different classifications. The big reason for that is the, the state and the feds, the FEMA, pretty much hand us a model ordinance and say, "This is what your regulations have to say." So we just pretty much incorporate that into our, our regulations as-is. Signs in Chapter 12, since we've overhauled our signed ordinance a few years ago, we think it's been operating pretty well. We have made a few tweaks to it here and there, but for the most part, that came over unchanged. Home-based businesses, again, those are found in Chapters 11 and 14. Again, those have, maybe some minor tweaks here and there, but for the most part, we feel that those standards, since we've changed those, have been serving us pretty well, too, so we haven't changed any of those. We just talked about accessory dwelling units a little bit. I won't get into that anymore, despite it to say that we really haven't changed much from what it currently is into the draft. Our landscaping, again, we have made some tweaks to that, but for the most part, it's pretty much unchanged from the current form that it's in to the, the present draft that we have. And then planned unit developments is another carryover section. I'll, I'll talk about that just a little more later. For the most part, it's unchanged. We did make some changes to that based on some of the public input that we received, and I'll get to that here in just, just a minute. But those are ones that we've pretty much taken from our existing zoning resolution over to our new draft, that are pretty much, are pretty much as-is, with a few tweaks here and there. I talked a little bit earlier about some of the carryover processes that we have. Some of the everyday processes that will remain mostly the same, our zoning compliance form that we have, essentially, before anybody can get a building permit for commercial uses or anything like that, or even new homes on acreage tracts or anything, they have to come to the planning office first for a zoning compliance form. Essentially, what we do is make sure, first of all, that the use, what they're wanting to do is approved in that zone, that the setbacks are met, we look at floodplain, those kind of things. We sign off on it, and they take that down to the building codes department for their building permit. That's not going to change. Our rezoning application and process, we've talked a lot about that, you know, besides the fact that the county commission won't be considering, the planning commission won't be considering conditional use permits, the process and the application itself will not change. Site plan submittal and review, that is something else that will remain a function of the planning commission as it is today, that will not change. And zoning enforcement, some of the concerns that we did receive from the draft, when we butted out for public comment, was, there were some that felt that, when they saw that there was reference to zoning enforcement officials in the zoning draft, felt that we were creating another department, and I just want to let everybody know that that is not the case at all. The zoning enforcement officials already exist, and we'll just be using those officials to enforce the, the new document as we do the current document. So those processes, none of those, again, none of those have changed. Now, we have received quite a bit of public input, a lot of meaningful public input, which we're very thankful for, and I feel have made the document, a better document than what we started with. Probably the biggest change we made was with variable lot sizes in the residential low-density zone, which is the RL zone. You'll recall that in the RL zone, the minimum square footage for a lot in that zone is one acre. Now, after getting a lot of public comments and feedback about that, what we decided to do was kind of have a variable lot size, where essentially, if you have either a public sanitary sewer, or if you have a decentralized sewer system, like a step system in a subdivision, and there's sufficient capacity as determined by the provider, as well as adequate water service available for domestic service and fire protection as determined by the water provider, even though you're in the RL zone, you may reduce your lot size to 15,000 square feet, which is essentially the R-15 capacity, if you will. Now, and you'll see there's three provisions there. If you have adequate water service for domestic service and fire protection, but adequate soils exist only for a septic tank, you know, that there's no step system, and there's no public sewer, then lot size can still be reduced, but it can be reduced to 22,000 square feet, which is just over, just a touch over a half an acre. And in the event that water service is either not available, if they're on a well, or it does not meet the minimum requirements as determined by the water provider, at that point, the lot size would not be less than one acre, which is the 43560. That's actually one acre of, of property right there. So that was, again, that was probably the biggest change we've made on that, and I'm sure there'll be some, some questions, so I'll go ahead.
The question I've got, it talks about the fire protection part.
If you, what, I'm sorry?
On the fire protection part of both those. What, what guidelines is CUD going by to determine that it's adequate water service for fire protection?
Well, when we first talked about this particular provision, we met with officials from, well, not so much this provision, but we, we did meet with officials from CUD on this. Essentially, what they asked us to do was to leave it as worded as, as you see here, what they deem adequate. And now, as far as what provisions they're using, I would have to check with them, but...
And when I say this, I don't mean anything derogatory whatsoever, but that's, I've got a problem with that, because right now, there's areas in this county that are got, have got red-top fire hydrants in subdivisions, and a red-top fire hydrant, you cannot catch that hydrant. It's less than 500 gallons, it's 499 gallons a minute or less, and a lot of times, it's a whole lot less than 499 gallons. And that's not the needed fire flow to, to be able to provide fire protection for some of these homes. I think it needs to be spelled out, in some cases, what guidelines they're going by, you know, does, is it something where the International Fire Code, where the, it requires a certain fire flow, or what? But it needs to be something spelled out in there to define those guidelines, what they've got, what they've got to go by.
Yeah, and again, and I'm, I'm not going to say, you know, that, I mean, I think your point's well-taken, but the reason you see it this way is because that was what was requested for us, to leave it that way, just to leave it more general.
I know, but I'm requesting it not to be so general, because I can foresee some problems that, you know, we've already got problems, you know, and I don't want to see us having more problems in the future, because this county's going to grow, you know.
I mean, your point's well-taken.
And until something's in there, I can't support it.
Essence, just like it is right now, though, Gary? Lots, acre, isn't it, isn't it exactly the way it is right now?
I mean, yes, I mean, the standards, right, I mean, there are no standards spelled out for, for this right now. I mean, in the subdivision regulations, you do see, there is a section in there dealing with fire, and when fire sprinklers would be required in a subdivision if it didn't meet certain flows, but that, that's, there's nothing in the zoning about that. That's only in the subdivision regulations at this point.
What we got, planning commission got from the public, had two different public hearings, but especially the one in December, if I remember right, it was very lengthy, and I think the term downsizing was used quite a bit from one acre, what's, if you look at the yellow section of your map. So in essence, we went back with this compromise proposal that would allow them to develop just exactly like they are right now, if the adequate utilities are available.
It's okay to downsize and, and create more homes, or more, more lots, but when you do that, you put houses closer together, you've got exposure problems when it comes to fire protection, and it creates, I mean, when I was on the planning commission, you know, you heard me, and some of the other planning commission members have heard me talk this before, you know, especially on... before, you know, especially on these, on the planning developments. You, you, when you get that setback closer, it's, it does no, nothing but create more problems. And, and I, I think it needs to be something in there stating what those guidelines are. That way, that person that's developing it, they know what the guidelines are, they know what needed fire flow it's got to be. My opinion, it ought to be yours.
Right, and, and I'm, like I said, I'm, I think your point's well taken, but I just, I just hope you understand that the reason we left it general is because that's what they requested we do, so...
But we're two and a half years into this process, it's already cleared, the planning commission, and here at this point in time, for us to change this very much, it's got to go back to the planning commission again. And, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're saying, but I don't see, I mean, I think it is feasible that we can proceed on with the process we're doing, and then work on a definition of fire protection as determined by the, and change, we can change that next month, and not break down, stop the whole book, you know, as long as the planning commission, and, and I think everybody here is hearing what you're saying, and probably agreeing on what you're saying.
We, we can fix it as a county commission and...
No, we can't. Planning commission cannot change a word in this book.
No, no, wait a minute. We can fix it as a county commission, what we need to do is, is, is we need to adopt the fire code, which has got, the fire codes has got the fire, needed fire flow.
Yeah, that would supersede the zoning regulation.
Correct.
Yeah, but, but even so, besides that, which could be another fix-all, we can still proceed with this booklet that's got these dozens upon dozens of meetings into it, and, and, and come back and work on our definition of adequate fire protection.
And, and as another alternative, the second, after we get done with the zoning, the next process, the next book, and of course, we're already really working on it, and we already have kind of a working draft, is the subdivision regulations. You can put those definitions in the subdivision regulations, because any subdivision of land would have to meet those regulations that are in that booklet, and that could be included in there as well, just as, just as easily. Yes, sir?
Well, I have to agree with Commissioner Farley on this. That's what the whole argument was for, for two hours last meeting, is not having enough water. And we trusted CUD the first time, and that's what the argument was about. So, if we, if we nip it in the butt right, not, I agree with Commissioner Jordan, too, we don't have to do it right now, but it's got to be addressed before this is passed, because we don't want to be caught going, well, what happened? Well, CUD said it was good, and then they go, go back and change it. When it's set, it needs to be set. And that's why I agree with Commissioner Farley on this, we shouldn't have to shut a water with a tanker, the water should be there if there's a subdivision there. So, and, and we got to hold CUD to the fire on this. I, I think we appoint people to the CUD board, if I'm not mistaken, just like we do. Do we not appoint anybody to the CUD board at all?
We confirm them.
So, we can hold them to the fire.
Well, in defense of CUD, CUD was charged to provide drinking water, and I remember when there wasn't drinking water out in my area, we waited for the line to come down the road, and so many people had to buy a tap. And so, let's not be beating them up, because they're, they're a drinking water provider who happen to provide fire protection where they can. But their first goal is to provide drinking water, and it hadn't been that long ago, and there's still people out there, they're still waiting on drinking water. So, let's not forget what they, they were started for drinking water.
Most utility districts are drinking water and fire protection. If you go look at other county, if you go to Mobile County, Alabama, it says Mobile County, Alabama Drinking Water and Fire Protection Authority. Maybe CUD needs to look at, if they're providing a service, they need to provide the service.
I'm, I'm going, just, Mr. Lynch here is on the CUD board, and he and I have been talking early on, I'm, as chairman of public safety, I'm going to go to the CUD board and, and, and talk about these situations. And, you know, there's, I mean, there's no sense in beating up the CUD board, by no
All right, well, if there's no other comments on that, of course, we can always come back to that, but I'll, I'm sorry.
Doug, I do have one thing.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Farley, when, when Chairman Phillips mentioned downzoning, what he was talking about was, initially, when the, when the group made the recommendation to the planning commission on how the zoning map should look, they wanted one unit per five acres. And so, the downzoning is not allowing greater density, it was allowing less density. And so, it's a little bit of a different mind shift on how we've used that term in planning in the past. But downzoning is allowing less, I'm, I'm sorry, allowing, yes, allowing less density, not more density. And what you were concerned about, one of the things you were expressing was increased density in a certain area. So, I just want to make sure that you understood what the, the concerns that the citizens came forward with was, we don't want that, we want to be able to still have what we have now. And so, that was the compromise that Planning Commission came, or the planning director recommended, and the planning commission came forward with.
But there's also PUDs that's in this thing, that are actually more dense.
Right, that's exactly right, yeah. But I just wanted to clarify the term when we were talking about downzoning. And then, Doug, one of the things that you would talk to the planning commission about that you may want to jump ahead and talk to this group about, it just sounds like it's a time to mention it, is, and I forgot what the exact terminology was you used with us, but basically, about six months after this, there's a cleanup amendment of some sort.
Right, yes. Yes, thank you, yeah, we call that a glitch ordinance. And, and that's something that, I'll go ahead, that was going to get to that later, like you said, but I'll go ahead and address that now. We realize that with a change of this magnitude, there's going to be things in here that, when we thought of it, sounded like a really good idea, and we had it on paper, it sounded like it was going to work real well, but in actual practice, maybe it doesn't work as well as we thought it was going to. Maybe there, there was a provision that we meant to add in, that somehow got neglected to get added in, I mean, you name whatever the issue is. Generally speaking, and most of the planning literature that you'll read will say, about six months after you adopt a new, a new ordinance like this, you can expect to see us back in front of you with a list of amendments that need to be made to the ordinance to fix some of those issues. You know, one of these issues could be the, the whole issue as far as defining what exactly adequate fire flows are, you know? And again, that doesn't mean you have to wait six months, just generally, that gives us an opportunity to see how things are functioning. That gives us a chance to look and say, okay, we need to change this, we need to add this, we need to remove that. That just gives us a chance to, to kind of see how things are operating. So, just because this is, if this is adopted in its, in its current form, that doesn't mean that in a few months, it cannot be amended. And, I mean, quite frankly, we've received some, even some emails, even fairly recently, as I think you all did, regarding some issues that aren't currently reflected in our zoning code, which we would like to see in our zoning code at some point in the future. And I guess my response to that is, while, yes, we do agree that, that there are many good ideas of things that we'd like to include in here, a lot of these topics that are out there are going to require a good deal of study, time, to, to really get into and see how they affect our county, and how the best way to regulate some of those things might be. If we were to try to wait until we could solve all the issues in this zoning ordinance update, we would be literally here for five, six, seven years before we have an usable document. So, what we recommend is going ahead, adopting kind of, if you will, the base document, and then allow us to amend it as time goes on. And, and again, that, that would just follow the same process as we do zoning amendments today, so. All right. Moving on to some other changes, we talked about plan unit developments. One of the issues that we did receive was that it didn't really come right out anywhere in the plan unit development regulations, that say that increased density was an option. So, we clarified that, that yes, indeed it is. Also, originally, the requirements for open space in plan developments was 20%, with half of that being what's called usable open space for like trail, you know, side, greenway trails, pocket parks, those kind of things. We received a lot of, of concern about that, thinking it was too high. So, after much discussion, we did reduce that required open space to 10% as opposed to 20. Now, half of that still has to be usable open space, like your walking trails, those kind of things. But as opposed to 20%, we did take that down to 10%. We also removed step areas from the open space calculation. And the example that I use is, if you have 100 acres of land, and let's just say 20 of that, 20 acres of that has to be used for a step area, if you're still requiring 20 acres on top of that to be open space, basically, you have 20 acres of step area and then 20 acres of open space. Some of the developers felt that that may be a little, a little much, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. So, what we did was remove the step area from the calculation. So, if you have 100 acres of land, 20 acres of which is dedicated to a step area, you base your open space calculation on the remaining 80 acres. So, you are getting a little bit of a break there. So, that is a change that we made in the document. We had several discussions on rock quarry regulations. Without going into all the details with that, essentially, the setbacks that we currently have regarding rock quarries and, and the distance to, to actual extracting of the, of the minerals and the material, our setbacks are pretty much maintained from our existing regulations, and we also added some new regulations from commercial areas and industrial areas and whatnot. We cleared the guidelines, we clarified, clarified them to say that those, clear guidelines for submittal requirements at the time of application, you know, basically what they're required to submit at that time. And we only allow them as special exceptions in the agricultural zone and the heavy industrial zone. There's a lot of back and forth on that. The, the reason we included the agricultural zone in there was really for the reason, if somebody needs to rezon property, and I think the example's even brought up here at some point, somebody can get to rezon, somebody can get, assuming somebody got property rezoned, and then they still had to go back and get a special exception, if for some reason that special exception was denied, the amount of uses that you have in the heavy industrial zone is a whole lot more than what you would have in the agricultural zone. So, it would just make more sense to have that in, by special exception only in the ARHI zones. We do not allow them by right in any zone, and it's only by special exception in those two. A few other minor amendments that were made, some examples are, we simplified the district purpose statements, it's really just the, the portion before the, what the district is for, essentially. It's just kind of a description of the, of the district and the purpose for it. We've added traffic study requirements into the zoning, and clarified the triggers that trigger those. We've changed, well, actually, we added cell tower requirements, and we, we feel we've aligned them with federal law at this point. And also, there was no real timeframe in the current regulation, or I'm sorry, in the current draft, for final decisions made by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we added those in there as well. Just a quick overview of the zoning map. The residential zones that are identified, and of course, you have a, a copy of the zoning map before you, the yellow areas that you see are the one acre per unit areas, the orange areas are the three units per acre areas, the RM, the yellow's the RL. You see a few green ones scattered here and there, that's the agricultural zones. The, the big difference between the RM and the RL zone, between three units an acre and one unit an acre, was based on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. Now, that may not be exactly what you see on the map, it's pretty darn close, I would say. Understanding that the map and the comprehensive plan, that future land use map, is not meant to be parcel, excuse me, parcel specific, whereas in the zoning ordinance it is. So, that's the big reason for the differentiation between those two, we use the comprehensive plan land use map for that. For commercial and industrial zones, we selected those using the following information that we had, using the existing zoning of the property. We looked at existing uses that were on the property for those, because there are several properties around that are just, are used in a commercial way, but maybe zoned residential. And we also looked at tax records. And what we tried to do is take the most restrictive zone that would allow the current use. And just as an example for that, if we had a use, and we'll just use the three commercial zones, if you had a particular use that would be allowed in any of the three commercial zone, either the commercial neighborhood services or general, we took the commercial neighborhood, because it was the most restrictive of the three, but yet it was still allowed. So, that's what we tried to do for those particular existing commercial uses that were in the county. This is the, again, this is a copy of what you have before you, this is the, the zoning map. And we actually have the ability, if you want to zoom around and look at specific areas, I don't know if you want to do that tonight, but we do have that ability tonight, if you so choose to, to do so. Now, just going on to final steps, again, this is just a work session tonight. What we wanted to do is, we know that this is a, a very involved document, this has been a, really, the culmination of many, many months of study, and, I mean, going back to 2009, really, the basis of all this, and even before that, before we even got the, the process started. So, no decision or anything is expected tonight. However, before this ordinance is enacted, there has to be a public hearing before this body, the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission has already had their public, they had three public hearings on it, and they've already recommended approval of the documents before you tonight. Public hearing requirements for this with state law says that you have to notify this at least 30 days in advance. So, we, it's not something we can just have next week, it would have to be something that would have to be advertised in, again, by at least a 30-day notice. Any changes that are made to the document or the map will require another review and recommendation by the planning commission. This isn't like, sometimes, when we see the conditional use permits that come before you, and you can make some changes on the fly here, like you could with a zoning amendment. Basically, you're either saying you like it, or you want to send it back down for study. Before any changes are made to it at this level, they have to go back to the planning commission, the planning commission has a chance to respond to those. So, that's just kind of giving you an overview of what the process is going forward from here. Now, at this point, you know, well, we've been taking questions throughout this discussion, and we'll open it, I guess, we'll just continue opening up for any other comments that the planning commissioners may have, or any questions that you all may have. But at this point, really, as far as the direction of this, is really up to you. If you want to have further work sessions, if you want to go ahead and try to schedule a public hearing, again, this is a lot to throw at you at one time, I realize this is, we've been here for almost a couple hours now, and we've kind of given you the, the overview of the documents, but at this point, again, we're, whatever direction, we're, we're more than willing to, to do whatever it is that you feel is appropriate at this point.
Board is open for discussion.
I don't care how strong of codes we make here on planning, zoning. Our department, our codes department, needs to be informed well enough that they can keep up with it and enforce it to the...
Yes, ma'am.
Residents, and which some of the, and, and some of the subdivisions, they don't enforce it like they should. And it should be enforced if we're going to make the laws, and don't make it any stronger than what we're going to do.
Questions, as we get further and further into this process, we need to be able to take questions and address, Robert, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I had some questions about the community assembly for the religious uses.
Yes, sir.
I've just been thinking about this the whole time. I, I just don't know if this is a good standard to use, I think it's going to be unclear, and we might get sued over it. What if a building has lots of small rooms? It says it's going to be based on the maximum occupancy in the largest assembly area, what if they have lots of smaller rooms? Will they still come under a small assembly?
Well, no, I, I mean, I think the, I think the intent of that is, you know, most, in most churches, your largest assembly area is going to be your sanctuary, and that's what the basis is going to be, that's your largest assembly area. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, the church I go to has got many rooms that we use for Sunday schools, for Sunday school time, but ultimately, when Sunday school's not in, everybody comes to the sanctuary, and that is what that would be based off of. So, I mean, I think, I, personally, I, that's how we, we drew it up, I think it's, I think, personally, I think it's the best way to do it, so.
I, I think the way it's worded, you could skirt the system if you didn't want to try to get land rezoned, or if you didn't want to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, you could have lots of small rooms, and, you know, we've got technology now where you can watch the speaker on TVs and things like this. And my concern is if we say that it's based on the, the largest assembly area, and all the largest assembly area is just, all the rooms are the same size, I'm afraid somebody could try to skirt the system the way it's worded. So, I, I do think it needs to be based on square footage, or have some other standard other than seating in the largest assembly area. Is there a way that we could determine maximum occupancy for a building, period, instead of basing it off of one room?
I would have to defer to our building codes director on that. I, I know there are standards for that, that's not something we really deal with in, in the planning realm, but that, that is something we could, we could discuss with, with them to see what they say, but...
Does, it just take a simple majority of the county commission to approve this, or will it take two-thirds?
Now, this is a simple majority, a simple majority.
Getting ready to say, is that, starting to say a little earlier, is that, as you develop questions, just like the one that Robert had, if it comes to your mind, we need to be able to discuss that. Those questions could be forwarded to the planning commission.
Yes, sir, yeah, and, I'm sorry, I was, I was going to go ahead and give my email address, but, yeah, and, I mean, yeah, these are the kind of questions we want to know about, and, of course, my, my email address is on the website, but it's D Demasi. And of course, my email address is on the website, but it's DDEMOSI, D-D-E-M-O-S-I, at RutherfordCounty.org. And if you have questions like this, I'd be more than happy to look into these and respond to those. And I think to follow up with Commissioner Stevens was saying just a few minutes ago, unfortunately, there are ways to get around pretty much any code, and people, if there is a way to find it, people are going to find it. Now, I don't think there is any way you can write the perfect code. I will say that in the example that you use, I'm not familiar with any church that does something like that, where they just have all the same number of rooms, and they just kind of do like a closed-circuit TV feed or anything like that. I do know of a larger church that does do that, but they also have three sanctuaries that can seat 2,000, 1,000 people. So I wouldn't, personally, wouldn't be very concerned about that kind of a situation happening. And again, I feel that the way that this is written here is probably the best as we could do it.
Mayor Burgess, we kicked this process off in 2009 under some direction from you. Do you have any comments?
Well, really goes back to 2008, before, when we started talking about this, and we got the first of money appropriated to start the consulting process. I'd just like to especially thank all of our steering committee members and our Planning Commission members for staying the course on this. This is one of the most important things that we have done since I've been here in my tenure, and it's going to be a document that's going to be used for many, many years to come. We haven't, we started with the document in 1984, 28 years ago, and it's been modified a number of times, but, and this one will continue to need to be modified as well. But I think it puts us in a position to make better decisions, more timely decisions, and I think it's really going to strengthen the whole process. And I think it's just critical that we start, and we start with the mindset, as Doug has already said, knowing that it's not a perfect document, but it's a much, much improved document, and we can continue to improve upon this document, and we will. So we have been listening, and I'm sure Ms. Embley has taken thorough notes, and she knows exactly the main points that really have been mentioned here that need some further discussion and deliberation, and we're going to work on those. And we will continue to do this until we get this to a point that we think it's acceptable, a good point to start from, and we'll move forward and identify and admit when we found some things that need to be corrected, and we'll go forward with that. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's been so patient over four years to this point, and I'm just really pleased with the outcome, even though we know it still has some difficulties that we'll struggle with. That's all I really want to say. I want us to get to the point of approving this in some form, and then we can move forward to continue to make some improvements.
I'd also like to echo my sincere appreciation to the Regional Planning Commission for their dedication and hard work over the last several years, and all the discussion and all the changes that have been made due to that discussion. Thank you for your dedicated efforts in keeping your nose to the grindstone, not only conducting county business, but looking at ways to improve the process countywide. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Robert?
I had one for the attorney. It seemed like we're not sure where we want to go with this, if we want to have more meetings, or if you want to set it for a public hearing. I was going to ask the attorney if we could do like a motion of the County Commission tonight to express the sense of the commission, or do some kind of vote to know which way the body wants to do that, but it wasn't on the agenda.
The short answer is this, no. I mean, I think the work session has no binding legal authority at all to move and move it in any direction. I will say, and I'm kind of restating to some extent what Doug said a minute ago, but it's important, once the Planning Commission approved the document, which it has, the document goes to the Board of Commissioners exactly as approved by the Planning Commission. The Board of Commissioners considers that document exactly as it was presented. You either approve it, or you don't. If you do not approve it, it will go back to the Planning Commission, you cannot amend that document on the County Commission floor. So you will have to vote it up or down in its exact condition as it is presented at the County Commission level. So from here, it is simply in a position to be scheduled for consideration by the Board of Commissioners, since the County Commission already passed it forward, and it just needs to be put on an agenda at this point.
Well, I guess my question was, can we pass a non-binding thing tonight, just to express what the sense of this body is?
Send up to the chair how the meeting's conducted.
What I would kind of suggest is that our next full county commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, the 11th of October, and any discussion that you have, any questions that you come up with, in the meantime, we can forward those to the Planning Director and his staff, and we'll try to address those briefly during that, as briefly as we can during that county commission meeting, and then see if we're ready to put this on the county commission agenda for November, for public hearing and consideration. If that makes sense, Mayor Burgess, that would be Thursday, the 15th of November. So that gives us a couple of months to once again
That's the first date that it could be placed on the commission agenda, because we have to give the 30-day notice, so we couldn't do it. So we've got between now and several weeks to really determine if there's some of these that are serious enough to encourage maybe the Planning Commission to maybe even revisit before then. But in any event, I think we have to sort of strategize on that part of it, to see if we want to send it as, send forward as it's currently approved, or maybe we could have some discussions, depending on what kind of feedback we get to the Planning Commission, if we want to consider some revisions before we send it on forward again.
Josh, did I just understand you to say, though, can we do that? Can we take it back under advisement into the Planning Commissioners and make modifications to it, or now that we've approved it and passed it, does it have to go as is?
My view is that if it's already been approved by the Planning Commission, that it is sent forward in that as it has been approved. So in order for it to go back to the Planning Commission, it will need to be considered by the Board of Commissioners. If the Board of Commissioners wants changes made, it would be sent back to Planning Commission. In other words, if they vote it down.
So really, the most that can happen in the next few weeks between now and the November meeting would be to either have questions answered for Commissioners, to sort of put their mind at ease, or to begin that list of items that need to go into the glitch?
That would be resolved after the document is passed.
Or they could turn it down, and then we would reconsider it.
The problem is, there's a specific statute that describes how you pass a new zoning ordinance, and it really doesn't allow for you to pass it back and forth in an interim way. It contemplates that once the Planning Commission passes it and sends it forward to the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners will consider that very document and vote it up or down. There's no mechanism really to just say, "Well, before we vote on it, let's send it back." And so I think, reading that statute strictly, the Board of Commissioners will have to vote on it, yea or nay.
Then our best course of action is vote on it yea or nay, in the meantime, get questions answered, and begin work on that glitch ordinance, where we're going to modify, when we know we're going to have to modify it.
That would be a reasonable way to do it.
But there's nothing against the state statute that says we could not do a six-point glitch.
No, no, because you're always free, the Board of Commissioners is always free to amend the zoning ordinance. So you could always do a cleanup ordinance later, if you wanted to.
And just kind of tailing on that, yeah, there is no specific thing that says you have to wait six months. You know, if, let's, for the sake of argument, say that the document's approved, well, this, again, for the sake of argument, it's November meeting, and we immediately see that there's something that needs to be put in there, or you instruct us to put something in there, I mean, realistically, you could, as early as the next month, I mean, now with the process, the way that our meetings fall, it'd probably be the month after, but, you know, within a couple months, you could see amendments to the zoning. So there's nothing that says you have to wait six months.
I was asking a question about, say, months can provide any changes, does that go through the local hearing?
Any changes that you would make, that, any amendments to the zoning ordinance would still have to go, it would go through the same process as amendments do now. There wouldn't be the 30-day notice and all that, just because it's an amendment at that point.
It would go to the Planning Commission, they would pass it, it would go to the Board of Commissioners, there'll be a public hearing at the Board of Commissioners, and they'll deal with it.
Also be a public hearing at planning, I would take, so it'd be two public hearings.
The statute doesn't require it, but we've always done that.
Like Mike said, we could fix something as fast or faster than we could send this document back and change it and start over again, or at least on the same timeframe. So, but this will be for a discussion item at the October 11th commission meeting, I take it, so we can set a public hearing, will it not? It has to be on the agenda for us to set a public hearing, I would take it. I'll let the mayor work that out.
planning staff could have opportunity to respond to that, and be better prepared to respond to that, those questions or concerns or whatever it is that you may have, okay? And once again, Doug, give them your email address.
Yes, sir, it's D-D-E-M-O-S-I at RutherfordCounty.org. And if you, for some reason, write that down and lose it, like I'm up to do many times in a day, you can go to our website. Yeah, sure. Please, call me late, I like it, but it's on our website as well, so. Or, and I'll encourage any, our office number's 898-7730. You can call and talk to myself or Elizabeth, we'd be more than happy to help you, or stop into the office, you know, we're just right across the street from where we are here. We're always willing to sit down with any of you, you know, to discuss any questions that you may have.
Heard it mentioned several times, it's not a perfect document, we know that it's not. We've made numerous, numerous adjustments to it since December of last year, and the document that was passed is here for the County Commission's consideration now, and sometime over the next few months, you'll have the opportunity to vote on it. Give it your earnest thought, consideration, and make up your mind according to the way that you feel the county could best move forward. So with that, any other questions for tonight? Thank you, Planning Commissioners for being here, thank you, County Commissioners for being here, and we're adjourned.